He did not, for an hour.
And welcome to the informal session of the August 12th, 2020 Planning Commission Public, well, we're not public yet, I guess we're public, public informal hearing. And so I just want to welcome you all here, and I'm gonna turn off my phone and ask our Planning Director Bobby DeHan to go ahead and get us started for today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I again want to thank you for your grace that you extended me when I gave you all a phone call, letting you know of our current situation with dealing with some of the Planning Commission items you've already heard, and I appreciate those of you that are able to participate in the joint public hearings with City Council for the upcoming weeks. We do understand availability issues and concerns, so the key for us is just to assure that there's a quorum available. So I'll let you read into how you would handle that as you need to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Orsler.
Can you tell, can you explain how that's gonna work with Council? I mean, it's gonna be, everybody's gonna hear the same thing at the same time, and then we gonna vote, and then they gonna vote, is that what it is?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what will happen, yes.
His expression, his expression says it all.
So do we like, when it comes to planning, do we like make a motion to what our minutes are and just approve them for our vote, or is that too simplified?
That was my thought, frankly.
Yeah, okay.
And we can, you can have a consent agenda.
I don't, I don't believe that the attorney, I don't know, that's a good question. I don't believe the Attorney's Office said that we would be able to do approving those minutes at the hearing, you'd actually technically have to rehear the items.
So if anybody comes, you'll have to pull them from consent, but any of those that you placed on consent or you now wish to place on consent, you can. But we do have to go through each one. Yeah, um, Dave?
No, ladies first, please.
Okay, so, Robin?
Thank you. So is there a chance that we could have 63 speakers for a particular item?
Another good question.
Yes?
Yeah.
Or more.
Thank you.
Can we come in just for the vote?
Well, Bobby, if I, correct me if I misunderstand, so from what I was explained, from the long conversation that I had with Mr. Stiles and Mr. Wood and Mr. Milker, was that we would hear our agenda. Applicant A, who's gonna, would come up, do their agenda, do their item, we would listen to it, it's typical that the ones that we hear that aren't on consent, that we would hear them, we would hear all the speakers, we would vote on it, and then I guess the entire room would slide over chairs, it would go right to Council, and then they would hear it as if they're hearing it for the first time as well, with all the speakers again, is that correct?
No, so no.
Would you, they only have to hear the speakers once?
Yes, so.
Thank goodness.
Yes, so it's just one, one public hearing, just to hear, to hear the speakers. What I'll, we'll do, and we've already have this prepared for you, so later today we'll have your packets ready for the 18th, sent out the link, and also for those of you that need, that requested paper copies, we will get you your paper copies before the end of the week. What it includes, and we only, I have one and I can pass it around, it includes your, your voting summary from the meeting that you heard the item, whether there were speakers in opposition or in support, and then whether you had it on the consent agenda. It will also have the staff report, which will be updated with any additional information we receive, and also all the letters of support and opposition and the minutes from the meeting of verbatim. So you can go through and read through the items and understand if there are any issues. There are many of these items that were on consent, as you know, most of them, the concern is, is Ms. Klein said, an item that may have 60 speakers come and speak, which I believe that agenda was all consent except for that one item, so. But this is what we plan to have you prepared with so that you know if you have any, any questions, so.
Is the item with 60 speakers, is that the 18th?
There is one on the 18th.
Yes, there is one.
Yes, sir.
So, a couple things, first off, it was relayed to me that there is no option to do this remotely. Okay, well, other people can do it remotely, why not?
Student, City Council has a, has actually a resolution and a code section that allows them to do it remotely, but you do not.
Okay, well, guess what, all bets are off. I mean, in my view, I'll come and do this stuff if I feel inclined, and if I'm gonna be here, and I'm not gonna be here all next week, and I'm not gonna shed a tear about it.
No.
My concern, however, is there are people who've spent a bunch of money on attorney's fees, they have contracts writing on this that are tied to debt and all kinds of performance measures.
Yes.
And it's costing those folks real money, so, and frankly, it's costing us money. My payout of this is absolutely zero. But to put that in perspective, I'm a commission compensated salesman, so time is money. Costs me money, just like it costs applicants money. And my greatest concern is not that we're gonna have a bunch of people come down here and talk to us, my concern is that by virtue of this, you're gonna have people who come to one meeting and have one outcome, and then the second time around, there's another outcome. Now, you can say, well, the attorney says, you know, it was never, never legally, you know, proper to begin with, but, you know, if you're an applicant, I'd be thinking, I can't imagine any way to be treated more unfairly than that, so. My wife asked me this morning, is there not someone who checks this stuff? Is there not someone who looks at something for the legal sufficiency on that? And that's kind of my question is, it's, it's not just the fact that you're putting us out, which frankly, seems like you've been kind of very cavalier with our time, but do we not have a way to make sure this stuff gets done right? And I know pandemic is not exactly something we have a lot of practice with, but still, I would think there's, there's, there's a system in place to ensure that, that the things that we do are legally proper and sufficient, in this case, we didn't get it. And not only is it gonna be very difficult on us and Council, but really unfair to a whole bunch of applicants who are spending real money on this kind of thing. So, I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't know what exactly caused that or how it happened, and human beings make mistakes, and I know all that stuff, but we're supposed to have systems that prevent that sort of thing. So, I don't know what the, I would appreciate if you'd tell us what that schedule is, if we've got meetings or a meeting or something next week, I'm not gonna be here. School's starting, we're busy, because they're not going to school. So that means parents have an awful lot more on their heads than they ever had before, and you all with children understand that. So, I mean, I just, I'm not gonna make any promises, very frankly, about my attendance. I'd like to help, but I did this already.
Understand, yes, sir. So, I had sent out the timeline that we have for the meetings that we need in order to, to correct some of these issues, and yes, Mr. Redmond, we have put now into a place additional safeguards to, to do reviews, to assure that we have, we're not missing language to make sure that these, our ads are legally sufficient. I will be honest with you, when we took the language out, I do believe staff took it out because we knew people could not come to our office, and so we believe that was a disservice to the public, but then at the same time, it ends up being something where by the Code of Virginia, it says you have to have that, those words in there. So, it's not a sufficient excuse, nor am I providing an excuse, I'm just saying how, how we got there, but we had added safeguards to, to review it together with our team as well as the City Attorney's Office, so that at least helps us going forward. As far as our agenda now, I can resend our timeline of what we have, essentially it will go till the Tuesdays until September 8th, so. As far as the, the outcome, there are the only items that need to be reheard by City Council, which appeared to move forward other than some people getting another opportunity to get heard again that were denied for their short-term rentals by City Council. Everyone else appeared to move forward pretty easily going through the planning items for the, for the two weeks that City Council needs to rehear theirs. So we are not, other than the time issue, which I do understand time is money, we, we don't believe that there should be any hiccups moving forward as, as those folks, other than those that, that get another bite of the apple, essentially, where they get to ask again for their, where they were denied previously for the short-term rental.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, David.
Um, question, so when you're looking at us for, after we hear the items, are you looking at us just to say yes or no on our votes, are you looking at us, because I think it would be beneficial if we could comment, same comments we had from our planning hearing, or are you just looking for yes or no?
I believe where it's, I believe where it's necessary, if you feel compelled to provide comment on, on your vote, then do so as you normally would.
Okay, perfect.
Feel like the script.
Well, you'll have the, you'll have the verbatim of what, what happened.
Just out of curiosity, has the city, I mean, this is really just a question, what happens if somebody was approved by Planning Commission and then they get denied by Planning Commission a second time? They're probably not gonna be real happy. I mean, to me, I think the city is gonna be very liable. This is, I mean, it's interesting. For me personally, I have a, it sounds like I have a big item that's in my borough on Tuesday night, I also am an applicant on an item that goes to Planning Commission in Chesterfield County on Tuesday night, so now I'm faced with, do I defer that and spend $1,000 on that, or do I come to this? My attorney, I've gotta talk to him, but he told me he wanted me there, it's just, I don't know, I'm not happy about it, it is what it is, but, anyway.
I understand, so.
No one's happy.
Yes.
Yeah, nobody's happy.
And, and again, and I am trying to be respectful of everyone's time and providing everyone as much information as possible so that we can get through these things as smoothly as possible, but we do, again, we do understand that everyone has, that is not the time that you signed up for nor allotted for, so we do understand that, the key is we just, we need a quorum for the items, and that's what's important.
Done.
So the, the last one would be September 8th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then we, we have our regular meeting on the ninth, so we have meetings two days in a row, is that, is that right, next month?
Get one lunch.
Get one lunch.
One lunch.
They're gonna cut the sandwiches in half, though.
Sandwich.
So you'll get one really each day.
But in all, but, but these meetings don't start until 6:00 at night, right?
That is correct.
So it, so it doesn't tire us up during the day, but it does take your evening away and part of your night, because these meetings got, I think one of these meetings was really long that we had, that we're supposed to have again, so.
18th, first one.
The first one will go late. Yes, sir.
Do we get overnight accom, accommodations at the beach?
Do you wanna stay at the convention center?
No. Okay, I'm, I'm done. I'll do the best I can.
Get an Airbnb?
Ooh.
Oh, you know what?
You had to go there, didn't you? You had to go there.
Dave?
Yeah. The fact that it's in the evening, I don't think is much comfort, or at least it's not to me. I've got a special needs child who's not going to school, it's all done virtually these days. That means she's gonna need a lot of help and assistance, particularly in the first parts of school as we're starting to understand this stuff. Guess who comes first? So, I mean.
So my question, Mr. Dehan, would be, do we have a quorum this coming Tuesday? I mean, we need to, do you have an answer, do you, I mean, are, are we sending out an RSVP to see which one of the commissioners will be here? And if we don't have one, then what happens to the Planning Commission meeting?
So.
That's right now.
We will, so that you don't have to, so you can check your calendars and, and see what your availability is, we will send something out later today requesting who will be able to attend, and if you are, and we will, we will go from there. Hopefully we can have six, we just, we need six.
And, and so I would, I would ask that, that packet that you have with you, not only is sent electronically, but is delivered to everybody a hard copy, so that everybody has it in advance, so they're not getting it on Monday for Tuesday night, because people have got to work and do stuff, and, and it takes time, I mean, really, they need it tomorrow.
Yes, no, they, they are prepared, we.
Okay, or today, when we leave, so that we have it in our hands and then electronic, because it, you know, people got work and plans, and as everybody said, in families, and this isn't typically, as you know, and I'm not chastising anyone, but this is typically not, you know, factored in into our calendars.
Yes, sir.
So, unlike Council, we have our couple of days, and then we, and I go to bed at 8:30 at night, so I don't know what I'm gonna do.
I'm right behind you, believe me, I'm right behind you.
I can make na.
Unless it's a Friday or a Saturday night, it can happen, but.
You have to drink a lot of caffeine on Tuesday, it sounds like.
Hey, Dee.
Yes, sir.
Well, first off, number one, I'm right behind you at about nine, but, so, but I wanna be, not trying to pick on you, but I wanna be clear about this, I'm not able to tell you whether I'm gonna be here for any of those dates, I'm just not able to tell you that. I mean, I might, I might not. If something comes up at 5:00, it's more important to me, I did this already, so, and this is, I'm telling you, this, the time when this is occurring is a very difficult time for families with kids in school, and we have only one shot at that. So that's gonna come before the second shot at this. And I'm just not able to tell you whether or not I will be available, so if you're trying to guess what the quorum is, you're gonna have to put a big question mark next to my name, and it's not because I'm trying to make it hard on you, it's because I'm not able to do it. I just, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear about that.
Actually, you're making it easy on us, we just figure you're not gonna be here.
And that, that may be the way to do it, that may be the way to do it, just count on the fact that I won't be here, and you might be surprised that I will, I just don't know.
You just count him.
I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to be difficult, it's just that's the way the world's gonna work in my house.
And I would, and I would ask, and as inconvenient as this is, it's, and as unfortunate as it is, that we try as much as we possibly can to be here, to get it done, because we need to, and it's unfortunate, and this is the position that we're in, that planning's in, and we need to get it done. That being said, you know, because of COVID and quarantined, and, you know, Whitney's had to do it, we've had to do it in our house a couple of times, those things come in, so it's gonna be hard to, to get, to get the sex, and hopefully we do, but, you know, I know nobody wants to do it, but we'll do our best.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
All right, we will, we're trying to finalize a little bit of language, so we're gonna try to get, if possible, if we can find someone that won't kick us off their printer, we can try to get some copies to everybody today.
Okay.
But we'll, we're gonna get some, there's some additional language you need to get up here, so.
Before we go on, Dee, can I mention?
Sure.
On my way to work this morning, I almost forgot this, on my way to work this morning, on Independence Boulevard, at the intersection of Haygood Road, I looked to my right, and there, in a truck, was our old colleague, Ron Ripley, and who lowered his window, and we had a quick conversation, and I wanted to report to everybody that he was pretty relaxed looking, and in a good humor, and we're gonna get together sometime soon, and it was really good to see him, if anybody's ever done this better than Ron did.
He did a great job.
I haven't heard who it would be, and who was also just the nicest and the most, you know, you know, gentlemanly guy you'll ever meet, anyway, it was really good to see him, because I haven't seen him since he walked out of here. I called him a little while ago and told him, I haven't seen him since you walked out of here, let's get together, but anyway, he looked good, and he looked very relaxed, and it was good to see him, and I'm sure he would have liked to have seen him as well, so.
Was he all tanned?
He was.
Yeah.
He looked tanned and rested and.
Complained through much call.
Such a great guy.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, with that, we have no presentations today, so we can go right into the, the staff briefings for today's agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll be starting us off with item one. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a body piercing establishment located off of Independence Boulevard near Mount Trashmore. In 2010, the applicant obtained a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor in a 1,500-square-foot space within this building. In 2015, a modification to the CUP was granted permitting expansion of the tattoo parlor into the entire 3,500-square-foot building. The applicant is now requesting to add body piercing services offered within the establishment. There will be no exterior changes or signage proposed for the building. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request and is recommending approval subject to the conditions in the report. I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
I think Jack sent an email on this, this is his, and said that he was fine with that.
All right, the next item is items two.
Do y'all, do y'all wanna consent us? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Marshall, I'm sorry.
All right, thanks, Dee. The next two applications is items two and three, and they are street closures for James T. Cromwell Esquire for the closure of one alley and two lanes located along 75th and 76th Streets. James T. Cromwell is the court opponent receiver for these street closures and will convey the interest of the alley and lanes to the respective adjoining property owners. The 18 adjoining property owners are requesting to close the 10-foot by 400-foot alley between 75th and 76th Street excluding a small 5-foot by 37.5-foot section. Two other smaller lanes are also proposed to be closed, a 15-foot by 95-foot lane north of 75th Street indicated as Lane A, and a 15-foot by 85-foot lane south of 75th Street indicated as Lane B. These areas total 6,512 square feet to be incorporated into the adjacent residential lots. The 10-foot by 400-foot alley between 75th and 76th Streets are the rear yards for the adjoining property owners requesting this change. The alleys and the lanes do not provide pedestrian or vehicular access to any waterway, recreation area, or residence, it would not result in a public inconvenience. As indicated on the screen, this is a street view for the 15-foot by 95-foot lane north of 75th Street, this is also known as Lane A, and this is being proposed to be closed, and then the 15-foot by 85-foot lane south of 75th Street, known as Lane B, will be closed. A viewers' meeting was held on May 14th, including staff from the Departments of Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning and Community Development, and the Office of City, of the City Attorney to consider their requests. The viewers determined that the closures would not result in a public inconvenience and deemed these closures acceptable. Staff is unaware of any opposition to these requests and is recommending approval with the conditions in the report. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
How many applicants are there?
There are 18 adjoining property owners.
This is, this is Lynn Haven, this is, this is Lynn Haven, you're Lynn Haven.
I'm Lynn Haven. I mean, I'm, I mean, there's no opposition.
No.
Yeah, fine with consent.
Okay. Great.
All right, good morning. This next item is located on Bonnie Road in the Rosemont SGA, next slide, please. In 2017, City Council approved a modification of conditions for motor vehicle sales, service, and automobile repair garage, as well as a street closure along the western side of this lot. That was incorporated into the site. Next slide. Recently, a 24-by-24-foot metal garage building at the back of the property, next slide, was installed within the street closure area for the purpose of interior detailing and exterior cleaning of motor vehicles. It was installed without a building permit or modification of the conditional use permits. The owner realized this oversight made by the manager of the operation and submitted the modification of conditions application to correct this oversight. The two-car garage structure is a prefabricated metal structure that features two garage doors and a gable roof. It sits, as you can see in the right picture, directly on the asphalt parking lot, but is anchored around the base of the structure. The applicant will apply for a building permit after review of this application to ensure that it will be safe for its occupants and stand up to hurricanes and storms, next slide. The request to incorporate the 576-square-foot building into the existing operation for interior and exterior auto detailing is acceptable. The building site and landscaping has been improved to reflect the plan for the auto use on the site, next slide. As the building is finished in white, placed behind the vehicle display area, as you can see in the left picture, and surrounded by parking lot landscaping, it reflects the existing design language for the dealership, next slide. Although the uses are not consistent with the vision of the Rosemont SGA plan, redevelopment of this parcel into the envisioned transit-oriented residential development is not imminent at this time. The small-scale operation compared to the large scale to the east and south supports an interim use of this nature. Next slide. Staff has reviewed the location of the building, which does not conflict with storm water management strategy for the site, with the storm water management strategy. There is no known opposition, and staff recommends approval of the project. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Any opposition to it?
No, sir, no, no call, I had a call, but it was really not opposition, it was a question about the sign from a neighbor, no opposition, no letters of opposition.
So they figured out, they made a mistake, they called you guys.
Right.
So they did the right thing.
Correct, they didn't receive any violations or anything, they wanted to do the right thing and get this corrected.
I mean, I, I mean, it's in Lynn Haven, there's no opposition.
I know, I know the applicant well, and he's meticulous about his businesses.
The building is very attractive, it's, it's the best-looking thing that's been there in a long time.
He has another one, I've known him for many years, and he was, they were out of town, they typically have this building on their other place, and the manager, and they had, he was horrified, what did he try, he was mortified about this whole thing, and he was trying to make it right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, he really was just so upset that this had happened, it's out of character, so.
Okay, so consent?
Great.
All right, thanks. This next item is located along Virginia Beach Boulevard, within the Rosemont SGA, next slide. Adjacent along the north and east of the site are single-family dwellings, to the west is a large one-story nursing home. Mixed-use retail is located along Virginia Beach Boulevard, along the western side, the left side, and the right side, next slide. The 4.82-acre site consists of five parcels with offices and a daycare on the site. Here's a look-along Virginia Beach Boulevard, next slide. The applicant proposes to consolidate the parcels and redevelop the property with a 150-foot, 150-unit, excuse me, senior housing facility with one and two-bedroom units. As the housing will be age-restricted to persons 62 years and older, a conditional use permit for housing for seniors and disabled persons is requested. As a result of a meeting held with adjacent neighbors, the proposed building was relocated in order to place the sides continuous facade there on the left, farther away from the residences along Karen Drive, to reduce the height and shadowing of the building to the, these residences. Adjacent parking, excuse me, adequate parking is provided. Proposed outdoor amenities include a grass courtyard and a garden, as highlighted on the right. Proposed indoor amenities are a community room, fitness center, media room, library, business center, beauty salon, mailroom, sunroom, and a screen porch, next. The proposed four-story 53-foot structure is planned with brick and fiber cement siding, along with premium vinyl lap siding accents, male railings are proposed for the balconies, next slide. The required 20-foot Category 4 buffer is depicted along the northern and eastern property lines adjacent to residentially zoned properties. The northern buffer is a little bit larger there along the north. All landscaping will be reviewed in greater detail at site plan review. The request is, in staff's opinion, consistent with the comprehensive plans recommendations for the Rosemont Strategic Growth Area. The plan calls for a mix of uses along this corridor with four-story multifamily housing and retail on the site. The site plan depicts a connected and cohesive layout that maximizes the use of the site with outdoor amenity spaces for the residences, for the residences. with outdoor amenity spaces for the residences, for the residents, a logical traffic flow, and ample landscape screening of parking areas from adjacent residences and businesses. Next slide, please. The submitted elevations depict an attractive building with high-quality exterior building materials that, in staff's opinion, will enhance the corridor and Rosemont SGA. Next slide. The proposed traffic generated for this use is less intensive than the potential build-out for this O-two Office District site. The one ingress egress point along Virginia Beach Boulevard is a reduction from four existing entrances, and that will, of course, reduce traffic conflicts along the Boulevard. The request was presented to the Senior Housing Advisory Committee, and no objections were raised. There is no known opposition for this request. Staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions listed. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No opposition.
Whitney?
Yes, no opposition. As far as stormwater management, they checked the box there?
They will continue to work on that through site plan review. This is in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, however, as you can tell, there is not much surface area for above-ground BMP, that sort of thing, so they would have to incorporate that, those structures underneath the parking lot, most likely.
Okay, okay, so they'll get that done, I guess, during site plan.
Yes, sir.
Approval. I mean, it's strange to say that we're going, I mean, I don't know that we need to hear it.
I wouldn't think so.
I think, I'd say put it on consent.
Unless someone comes to oppose us, I don't know that we need, I don't think, I don't, I don't believe we need to hear it either.
I agree, I mean, I think it's a.
Very, very appropriate use and a huge upgrade to that.
I completely agree, I think it's a great use for the property.
If you spend a lot of time in front of there, I mean, this is, this is.
It's an improvement.
Big improvement, big improvement.
I agree.
Yeah.
And the applicant is agreeable with all conditions.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to consent it.
Okay, that's great, we'll just put it on there in case something happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Next item is a request by the Bonnie G. Bright Sand Company for a modification of conditions to their borrow pit to extend time for operations. Properties located on Princess Anne Road, immediately north of the North Carolina border. Next slide. Excavation of sand has been an ongoing operation on the property since the 1970s. The original conditional use permit for a twenty-three-acre borrow pit was approved in December 1989. Subsequent approvals, most recently in February 2010, expanded the operation to a total of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres. At the time of the approval, it was expected that ongoing mining would continue until June 2019, with restoration of the site to be completed by June 2020. Next slide. This is a view of the property from Princess Anne Road. The operations of the borrow pit are beyond the tree line and the berms that you see in the middle distance of the photos. Next slide. At this time, the applicant is seeking a modification of conditions to permit the operations to continue for another ten years, to June 2030. This would allow for the complete extraction of marketable material from the mine, the reprocessing of overburdened material, and restoration of the site. There will be no change to the operations of the borrow pit. The hours of operation will continue to be seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to twelve PM on Saturday. No work is performed on Sunday. Princess Anne Road is the main haul road, and access to the site is from Currituck County, North Carolina, just south of the boundary between the states. Staff did receive an email from a concerned citizen, which has been included as part of your supplement. The citizen has general concerns about the operation of borrow pits, including flooding, well-contamination, and traffic, and is specifically concerned about the possible expansion of the operations on this site. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions found in the staff report, and I'll stand by for any questions.
You know, I think this operation's been going on, like you said, for many decades, and it's been pretty successful, and it's a needed, needed thing in the city of Virginia Beach, and I think it's, it's fine. If it wasn't for the opposition, I'd put it on the consent agenda, but I guess we got to hear it because of the opposition, is that right, Bill?
It's your decision, sir, but yes, I would recommend that.
If there is opposition, the letter is not opposition.
Is, there's somebody standing up?
I, I understand, it's, they may be here. They, they have not promised to be here, but they.
We could all consent and pull it off if we have to.
I want to add something if I could.
Yeah.
This operation is very critical to this, not this Virginia Beach, but to the whole construction industry in the city, and through Suffolk. They even go to Newport News. It needs to, it needs to stay in place, in my opinion.
Okay, Dee?
Yeah, I read that letter of opposition very carefully a couple of times, and I didn't find anything in there that I found particularly convincing. Just very general, sort of, you know, why don't you do some more studies that'll, and you know, people extend conditional use permits all the time. As Mr. Weiner says, we need this material. I mean, we fundamentally need this material. So I would be in favor of putting it on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Now, if someone comes in opposition.
We yank it.
Happy to pull it and hear it.
Okay.
That's my view.
That's what we'll do then.
That's what we're going to do.
Okay, great.
Understood, thank you.
Alright.
I will now speak to the next item.
Alright.
It's a request by Shelley Gale Dagenhart, conditional use permit for short-term rental, and they are seeking a deferral of this application to allow them to continue to work on their parking plan.
Well, they may have that.
Caffeine?
Next speaker is Will Miller.
We've got to wait for him, don't we?
Ah, conditional use permits, great. He can be remote.
First slide, I believe the address is written incorrectly. It's eight oh nine Vanderbilt Avenue. This is in the Beach District. Let's check something real quick, yeah, so that is not correct, should be eight oh nine Vanderbilt. Beach District, this property is five thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet, is Zoned R-ten Residential District. The lot is developed with one single-family home built in 2009. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with this subject address. On-street parking is not permitted on this portion of Vanderbilt Avenue. The application came in as a four-bedroom short-term rental. However, originally, city records reflected this as a three-bedroom home. The applicants were advised to contact the city assessor's office to address the discrepancy. As of this morning, the city assessor does show this as a four-bedroom home. The number of parking spaces provided on-site is four, with one in the garage and three in the driveway, which you will see the garage picture there. The site is located within the Croatan subdivision, which is, which primarily consists of single-family dwellings. The applicant's parking plan depicts four required off-street parking spaces, one within the garage and the others in the driveway. As permitted by Section two forty-two, two forty-one point two-one of the city zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. However, a condition is recommended that assures the garage will always be available to the short-term rental occupants. Based on the considerations above, staff recommends approval of this request with the recommended conditions listed in the staff report, which reflects city council's most recent short-term rental revisions by reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom, which the Kims were agreeable to. One letter of opposition was received late yesterday afternoon. It was rather lengthy, so the highlights include concerns relating to the following. Requested moratorium of short-term rentals in Croatan. Concern relating to the lack of screening and privacy in the subject yard. Belief that the location is an inappropriate short-term rental use. Concern related to an increased number of short-term rental investors in Croatan that are establishing these uses to avoid the Sand Bridge Special Service Tax for beach replenishment, therefore showing, transforming, therefore slowly transforming the neighborhood into a community mirroring that of the Sand Bridge model. Concern that the needs of the short-term rental investor is favored over the needs of the permanent residents. And I believe the person who submitted the letter is signed up to speak today for this application. This concludes my presentation of this case, I'll stand by for any questions, thank you.
So I guess we will hear this.
I, I received a lot of calls last night.
Did you?
Yeah.
On this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
George, is this a, and I'm not as familiar with Croatan as, it used to be years ago, but is this a, more of a neighborhood feel, this part of Croatan? Are there a lot of rentals?
There's a lot of rentals.
Yeah.
There are a lot of rentals?
But.
Easy answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of rentals. There's a lot of homeowners, too.
So it's kind of a mix. I was just curious.
Okay.
What?
What, go ahead.
What, the last meeting we had, the workshop, and I had to leave early, but what, what have we, where have we come on the short-term rental deal? What the council is.
You got a coin?
It looks to me, I've watched a few council meetings, looked to me that they, the main thing that they've done, the council is doing, is changing the two per week to one per week.
And that's in here, that's in the conditions.
And that's, that's what this is. So, I mean, is that going to be, is that going to be a policy that's going to be developed? That, that, or that is developed, that we, we change that condition? Or what are we, what's, what's going to be the outcome to this?
So, we, we believe that that will, after looking at the consensus from council during that meeting, we believe that will potentially be a policy that they move forward. We are awaiting a, another referred ordinance, a referred referral request from Councilman Jones, Vice Mayor Wood and Councilman Jones, for us to look more in-depth at all of the short-term rental regulations. So, we, we believe that this will be a part of that, those, those changes, and then we will do the bigger dive as necessary to, to go over all the regulations. The ones that we are only hearing today are the ones that deal with Old Beach findings and enforcement, so, very small subset.
It, it appears to me that, that this short-term rental thing is going to change the look of the, of the whole oceanfront area, is what it looks like to me. And I don't know whether we really want that to happen or not.
Which is a, a part of a larger discussion.
Yeah.
Can I, I want to piggyback on that real quick. So, I know one of the things I wanted to ask today was, what, what's our next step in the ordinances? Are we waiting for the Wood and Jones to come through before we make that next step?
So, before we had our schedules hijacked by the circumstances that we have now, I was hoping to have another meeting to discuss kind of the other issues that we have with short-term rentals.
A workshop.
A workshop, another workshop.
Right.
But, that may get pushed just a little bit because of the request we're making of your time right now, so. But, that is the goal, is to be.
And the reason I'm asking that, Bobby, because I, I agree that maybe we need to wait, because why should we try and do something, but they want to change it, then we got to, our workshop was null and void, because we're going to have to go back in to look at what they, they want to come up with. So, maybe we should wait until they come up with something before we start another workshop.
I agree with that.
Well, the only reason why I say this, and Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, is that today we are just voting on Council, Councilman Towers, Old Beach, and the reason for some of that was to protect that area as quickly as we can. To, I just, there's a, so I don't, I.
I'm just curious, it's a small area, why is that area so important compared to Croatan and other places? I'm just curious.
Because it's getting.
There's so much going on there.
Because it's getting hit hard, and, and so I did, and I don't know if we want to have this conversation now, or we want to wait till we get to the ordinance and do it, and, and maybe let's do that.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and finish this, and then, and then when we get to, to that in, in the application. Yeah, Mike, sorry.
How many ordinances are we talking about today? Three?
Four.
Four. The four we've seen.
Correct, that is a.
And we're voting on them individually, correct? Because they're all individual items, eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, or eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one? I'd like to vote on them individually.
You'd like to vote on them individually?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, you can.
I would, too.
I think so, too. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, Will, moving to your next item.
Will, what are they doing in that room?
We're going to hear number eight, right?
Yes.
She's going to hear number eight.
Will, we're ready for your next item.
Alright, moving on to the next item. This is at fifty-one twenty Settlers Park Drive. This is in the Centerville District. This two-thousand-one-hundred-square-foot lot is located within the PDH-one Plan Development District, specifically the Indian Lakes Land Use Plan, and contains one townhome dwelling within a row of seven. According to city records, this townhome was constructed in 1986. On-street parking is permitted twenty-four hours per day. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking space is required could occur within the public street. However, on-street parking is extremely limited in this block due to the volume and compression of existing driveway aprons, as you can see in the picture there. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The number of bedrooms in this short-term rental is two. Originally, there was a discrepancy with the bedroom count between the applicant and the city assessor's office that had three. However, the applicant worked with the city assessor's office, and I did receive confirmation from the assessor that there is two bedrooms in this unit. The number of parking spaces provided on-site is two. The site is located within the subdivision of Colony Point, which is a townhome community included in the 1971 city council-approved Indian Lakes Land Use Plan. Colony Point was platted in 1983, '84, and includes two-hundred-and-thirty-eight townhome sites. The surrounding area includes a mixture of townhomes, single-family homes, and apartments. The existing driveway is large enough to accommodate two off-street parking spaces entirely within the borders of the applicant's private property. Thus, the parking requirement found in Section two forty-one, two-one of the city zoning ordinances met. Based on the, these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the recommended conditions listed in the staff report, which reflects city council's most recent short-term rental revisions by reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom, which was agreeable by the applicant's representative. There is no known opposition to the, this request at this time. This concludes my presentation of this case, and I'll stand by for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. George?
Oh, it's not mine.
It's Centerville.
Centerville. Oh, it's Centerville, I'm sorry. I was looking at the next one.
We can still hear from George.
We can still hear from George, but we're not, we're going to hear from Robert.
It's okay, I drove past the property, I have no concerns.
Okay. Consent it.
Thanks, George.
Next items, Will?
An eleven.
This is eight thirty-six and eight thirty-eight, Twelfth Street. This is in the Beach District. This four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-square-foot lot is located within the R-five-D Residential District and contains one duplex dwelling. Both units are included with this application, and the applicant owns both units. According to city records, this duplex was constructed in 1962. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. While visiting the site, staff noted the existence of compacted gravel within the city right-of-way. Since this material is not typically approved for use in the right-of-way, the applicant was referred to the Development Services Center Division of the Planning Department to discuss the possibility of keeping it. On June twenty-second, 2020, DSC engineers denied the applicant's request to retain the gravel in the right-of-way. However, a small amount of concrete on either side of the existing driveway apron was approved as long as it remains one and a half feet or more. remains one and a half feet or more from any utility box or guy wire. This option was discussed with the applicant, who agreed to complete an addition to the existing driveway apron as approved by the Development Services Center, or DSC. As a result, Condition Number Three is recommended to address the additional concrete in the existing driveway apron. On July 20, 2020, the applicant submitted a photograph showing the gravel had been removed from the city right-of-way. On-street parking is permitted 24 hours per day. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking space is required could occur within the public street. However, on-street parking is limited in this block due to the volume and compression of existing driveway aprons. The number of bedrooms in each short-term rental is two. 836 12th Street has two, 838 12th Street has two. Therefore, each unit will require two on-site parking spaces, as you can see depicted in the plan. The property is located within the Lakewood subdivision, which is a neighborhood composed of a mixture of housing types with a few scattered commercial uses. The subject property is surrounded by other duplex dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, and an apartment complex. The applicant's parking plan depicts four off-street parking spaces on the property, two for Unit 836 and two for Unit 838. As permitted by Section 241.21 of the zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. However, due to the current configuration of the driveway apron, a condition is recommended requiring a small entryway expansion to aid with vehicle ingress and egress on the property. This expansion was previously approved by the Development Services Center Division of the Department of Planning and Community Development, as illustrated in the site layout and parking plan you see before you. You can also see that it's a rather unusual-looking configuration. I call it a bird mouth for those little triangles there. The reason being is it's hard for him to expand because there, the driveway apron is flanked by guy wires and a utility box. So, this was the only avenue that he would have that would be code-compliant to give these vehicles a little bit more ease of entry and exit. Based on the considerations above, staff recommends approval of this request with the recommended conditions listed in the staff report, which reflects city council's most recent short-term rental revisions by reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. The applicant was agreeable with these conditions. There is no known opposition to this request, and this concludes my presentation of this case. I'll stand by for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Not George.
Thank you.
On the traffic, can I ask a question about traffic? Is the traffic or Polite Works, are they involved with that guy wire recommendation? I just was concerned about that. Yeah.
We, we weren't involved in this one.
Okay.
But generally, if it's a foot and a half away, it's pretty good. You'll see poles, you know, commonly you'll see poles about a foot off the edge of pavement. Granted, there's curb there sometimes, but, you know, if they haven't hit it yet, they're not, you know, it's probably gonna be safe, especially with the little bit of concrete that they are adding. So, I don't feel like it's gonna be a safety issue, especially with the speeds that people are going in and out of these driveways.
All right. Thanks.
Sure. Any other questions?
Show Don your mask.
I guess if there's no, I mean, they may, may meet everything, other than that was my only concern. Is there, Will, is there any opposition? Did he say that?
There's no opposition that I know of at this time, sir.
Yeah, I wanna say something. This is something we need to think about, because something, something that happened last month, these, and I've been thinking about it since then, I don't know how to go about fixing it, but we need to discuss it. So, we decided to put ten and eleven on the consent agenda, right? Now, we're gonna hear number eight, and I'm pretty sure number eight's probably already in use being a, being a short-term rental. And we had, we told a person last month that, well, you're already using that short-term rental, so we're not gonna grant you permission. We denied them because they had already been using it. Well, we're not asking these ones that aren't conditioned on the consent agenda if they've been used. So, how can we ask somebody, deny somebody because they're using theirs now as a short-term rental, but they're coming in front of us because they're being heard?
Do you wanna hear them all?
Well, I mean, I don't know. That's why I'm asking y'all. What do you, I mean, you can't ask that person, in my opinion, everybody might, I'm sure everybody else has their own opinions, but it's kinda hard to deny somebody if we can't, if everybody else is doing it. We can't deny that person.
If I remember correctly, there were other concerns about that property that prompted us to hear it, and so that was just an additional concern. And there were, was opposition by neighbors, and since we don't have any opposition, I don't feel compelled to ask the same question, although I do, I hear your, your conflict.
Whitney?
Does staff, Bobby, does staff research these properties at all to determine whether or not they're currently being used? Are they on Airbnb? Are they on BRBO or one of these other sites?
Yes, Mr. Graham, Mr. Miller actually gave us a summary yesterday, gave his summary on this, researching it through our third-party application. And the Vanderbilt application is not currently listed nor operating.
Okay.
Neither is the Settlers Park or this, or this application as well. And I believe, as long as Will doesn't get cut off, he will, he does tell you that before he, when he gets started with his, with his presentation as well.
Okay. I didn't hear that.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah, my, my question is the same as Robin's. I mean, I don't ever recall having made, made a recommendation based on whether or not someone was already operating without their conditional use permit. There are other factors that were involved in that. No doubt that can poison the well a little bit, right? And, you know, but the truth of the matter is, people will do that sometimes, and I think we oughta, we oughta make our recommendations based on, on those other considerations. And keep in mind, you know, there are residential real estate agents out there telling folks, oh, yeah, yeah, of course you can get this kinda price for the thing, because of course it can be a short-term rental, you know, without, without a whole lot of, you know, and kind of encouraging folks to, to do that. And it's unfortunate, but there are car lots that operate that way. There are churches that are in shopping centers that ought to have conditional use permits that don't know, or, you know, some people just think these things are, I mean, a guy said, I'm gonna put my signs out in front of my property until the city comes and makes me take them down. There are people who will take advantage of stuff like that.
Sure.
I don't like it any more than you do, but I don't know that we ought to start making that the basis of our-
Yeah, no.
No.
I agree 100%. There were other items in there, but there was comments made that, well, why should we award them because they're already using it?
Yeah, but I don't think that was the basis.
But I'm, I'm just saying, just keep it in mind. That's all I wanna do, just keep it in back of your mind.
Where were we with this?
I have a-
Yes, Mike.
A point I'd like to, those of you who have the map pulled up in front of you that shows how many short-term rentals there are in the vicinity, just again, it's just educational opportunity, not necessarily focused on this application, but if you look at that map, man, they're popping up all over the place. They're around 10th and 9th, and it's, it's getting, getting, getting very popular, getting very popular.
Very popular. This is an area without an overlay, and, and then you can see where the school is, how close it is to it. So, it just, this is all residential.
Also, as to the, used prior to application issue, I guess we could put on the application, have you used the property for a short-term rental in the past?
Well, I think in the, in the past-
Yeah, you'd say, well-
Well, we are researching it.
They're already on it.
Yeah. We already have the information. So, we have access, we have access to the information to see if they've been listed.
If they register?
No, this is, this is even, this is a third-party application we have that actually audits all the websites to see if someone's been listed.
Oh, okay.
Is that on the staff report?
It isn't, it is not.
Can we get that on the staff report? Would that be, I mean, is that a problem? Does they already in use of SDR?
I don't, I don't think, it'll, it'll be hard, because the staff reports, we, we start writing them a little sooner, so we can try to get it as close to the time. We try to get that information right up to the day before, so.
Okay. Did we-
Ten of those are consent.
Okay. All right, we're on to number 12.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, the applicant at 448 Garrison Place is requesting a conditional use permit for short-term rentals. This 8,438-square-foot parcel is Zoned R7.5 Residential. There are three bedrooms in this single-family dwelling, thus three parking spaces are required. The existing driveway, 15 feet wide by 43.7 feet deep, cannot accommodate the three required off-street parking spaces. As such, the applicant submitted an alternative parking plan indicating that they would add three feet by 18 feet of gravel to the left side of the driveway in order to meet the minimum width requirement, and this will be reflected in Condition Number Two. The zoning administrator has reviewed the alternative parking plan and deemed it acceptable. All of the requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met. The proposed conditions reflecting the conditions most recently imposed on short-term rentals by city council, which reduce the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limits the calculation of the number of overnight guests to two per bedroom, the applicant is agreeable with. And I'll stand by for any questions the commissioners have.
Okay. George, this is-
Yeah, any opposition?
No opposition. I haven't received any phone calls or any letters.
And I haven't either. I mean, I don't like it with the parking, but they're meeting it in staff.
Well, it's a, just a, about three feet, it's missing three feet in width, essentially. And in the front of the driveway, it actually kinda has that, but there's a handicap ramp, so it has to move those two side-by-side parking spaces, number two and three, back. And where that is, is 15.3 feet wide versus 18 feet for them to be side-by-side. So, that's why the addition of the gravel would make it 18 feet.
And I appreciate that, but we have denied other ones because they didn't have the driveway. We didn't say, oh, go ahead and pave your front yard, go ahead and add gravel to it. You didn't meet the parking requirements, and that's the only parameters we have to go on. They either take the handicap ramp up so that they actually have the parking, and I don't even think that will make it. But I, I just, I'm, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that, George. I'm sorry. I just, we, yeah, Dave?
And I'm not getting at what you say, but I've never been comfortable with this nine-by-18 thing. You can fit two of my cars in an 18-foot spot. Now, I have a small car, but there aren't but a handful, I mean, two or three vehicles in the, you know, in the, in the United States that are 18 feet. There's a Chevy Suburban, and I mean, you know, this 18-foot car is a really, really long car. I don't understand what that, where that standard comes from. I mean, is that some, you know, kind of typical standard that we, that we point to, or we just created out of thin air? To say that you have to have, I mean, we're really gonna have someone show up for a three-bedroom house with three Chevy Suburbans?
So, so the nine by-
I know people who take bigger cars when they go on vacation, but, I mean, you know, not if you own a Ford Taurus. So, I mean, it's not, I mean, my car ain't nine feet wide and 18 feet long. So, I mean, I don't understand where, where we came up with that standard, and I'd kinda like to figure that out.
So, the nine-by-18 standard is, is a commonly-used number to, it doesn't just incorporate the, the size of the vehicle, but also the maneuvering and ability to open the doors. So, yes, most vehicles are smaller than that, but that essentially is-
Almost all vehicles.
Yes, right, right. The 18-foot depth, definitely, the nine, yes, all vehicles are most, most likely fit inside that, because that's the point. The nine-by-18 just gives us the ability to say, this should give you enough room, one, to open the doors, and two, to actually, when you back out, to also have some room to maneuver so you can make the turns. So, that's, and, and that is a pretty standard number that is utilized in, calculating parking. That's, that's a pretty nationwide standard. So, yes, you are correct. That's, that's not the typical car size, Mr. Redmond, and, and that's why we also have the, the picture here, so that we can, we can take a look at it and see, that looks like a typical driveway to most people, and they probably could fit, there are two cars on it, which is why, we, but we do have to have a standard that we say, this is what you have to meet, so that we can, we can tell that to everybody to be as consistent as possible.
I, I mean, I kinda agree with that, Mr. Redmond. I mean, we can't say you can't bring a Suburban. We gotta be general on the size. Something Ms. Oliver just said, I mean, what if someone was to come before us and say, hey, I'm gonna build a second bedroom, so I'm gonna go ahead and apply for a short-term rental, so I can get my four people in there, and they only have a one-bedroom apartment, or whatever, but same thing with what you just said. So, I'm agreeing with, with-
Yeah, I just, yeah, Dave?
I'd much rather see added gravel than concrete, that's for sure, but it seems to me in the past that, I don't know, maybe I'm not thinking right, but when there was gravel there, it was not right, and we were not allowing them to use it as a parking because it was gravel. But now we're, is that right, or am I thinking something wrong, thinking of something different?
No, so the, some of the ones that you've seen with gravel were ones that were installed without approval. So-
Okay.
So, we're trying, so, at this point, so, keep in mind that they could technically get a permit to widen their driveway now, as long as they don't widen the curb cut or the apron wider than 20 feet. So, they could go and pave it, but then we don't, we don't want them to move forward to do improvements prior to, to getting their approval, because that's gotten some people in, in trouble, too.
Sure, an extra money.
So, it's not something that's against code for them to do, to say that they'll widen their driveway. All they're doing is providing the minimum, and they're, and we are trying to use a surface that isn't fully impervious, so.
Yeah, do we really want people adding more impervious cover? I mean-
So, I guess we're here.
Yes, Mike.
What's the difference between this and approving a, a application where there is no structure on it, but there's a approved building plans, approved site plan to build something?
Which was the other thing. I know.
And it's, and what that's gonna be built is a three-bedroom dwelling, and so I'm on a conditional use permit now. So, I know I'm okay to build my building. I mean, there's no difference, really.
Have you done that?
We've heard, we've heard that. We, we've, we've voted on that. Yeah, we've, this is, I'm just, personally, I'm just not, I just, I think that you have what you have, and, and we're already introducing a commercial use in a residential zoned area. And again, you know, we'll probably have this discussion more at length when we get to the ordinances and stuff, but this, this is, you know, our only basis on approving or not approving these is parking. We can't really police who's in a bedroom and who's not, or trash. So, I'm not okay with adding into the driveway. That's just me. I don't know what, you know, the other commissioners wanna do. But that's all up to y'all, and George, this is your district. So, I'm gonna, but I will, you know. Yeah, Dave?
Well, no, I was just gonna say, this, I don't wanna get us on a different conversation, but this is precisely the sort of thing that leads me to where my philosophy has been, very much of L.A.'s, way more of this stuff needs to be in an ordinance, and not have it just be, you know, we make it up each time as we look at it. And, I mean, you know, questions like this need to be in the law.
Right.
Mike? Thanks. And I'm, I, George, I have a lot of respect for your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do.
George?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kinda swaying towards Ms. Oliver's, I mean, they're proposing something. I'd rather it be on-site, and I know we've done it before, but I'm trying to stick to my guns. I'm learning every day, I gotta admit. I mean, so, I'm gonna go ahead and ask to hear it.
Okay.
So I can hear everyone's comments.
All right. Will, you still with us?
Good morning, Commissioner Oliver and commissioners. Item 13 is a short-term rental request for a semi-detached dwelling in the Brandon- Item 13 is a short-term rental request for a semi-detached dwelling in the Brandon neighborhood. Neighborhood is Zoned R 5D and is categorized by a denser residential building type. Next slide, please. The community was constructed in the 1970s and 1980s, this particular unit in 1979. Next slide, please. Subject unit has four bedrooms and thus requires four parking spaces. All four spaces are in the driveway of the unit. Next slide, please, Michelle. But as you can see, two of the spaces slightly overhang into the right-of-way. As such, an alternative parking plan was submitted to me. I did approve it as the overhang does not block vehicular or pedestrian access. I said this parking is acceptable. There is additional on-street parking available for any overflow. Next slide, Michelle, please.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Go back to the, the parking, please, I'm sorry, that way. So is that the new one? Because that's not what's in our packet.
Correct. What was in your packet was a 45-degree.
Right.
To be honest, I am not sure which is the newer one. Again, I am just stepping in, presenting this. It appears to me, though, after looking at the 45, that they could get two of those spots entirely on-site, in which case only one would overhang into the right-of-way.
That's what I was asking.
Either, either way, you know, I would look at that parking plan and approve that three-foot overhang into the right-of-way, but if it would be preferable to have those at a 45-degree to get that, you know, one other space completely on-site, we would certainly be amenable to that. Which brings me to the next slide, Michelle, please. Which, as you can see, there was additional driveway recently installed. A permit was pulled for this in June, in March of 2019. There actually was an error when this was constructed, but it was fixed, and the permit has been finaled out a few months ago, and everything is, is good to go with this driveway expansion. Due to the recent city council discussions that were mentioned earlier, the four-bedroom unit has a maximum recommended overnight occupancy of eight, two per bedroom, and one rental contract per seven-day period. The applicant is amenable to that. Next slide, please. The neighborhood, as you can see, is located near Lake James. It's not an area of the city where short-term rentals are expected. You can see that there is only one other registered rental to the far right there in that general vicinity. Next slide, please. Staff is not aware of any opposition. We did receive three letters of support from the adjacent property owners. Staff believes all other conditions of 2241.2 can reasonably met and recommends approval of this application. Are there any questions?
Did we see this before? Or is it wasn't like this?
I think, I was wondering the same thing. I think it's, I think it was a driveway that looked exactly like that.
Exactly like that.
Kevin, I got a question. Was the driveway brought down all the way to the apron?
Is that what happened, and they had to tear it up or break it up?
The driveway, yes. It was, when it was brought down originally on the permit, it was brought down 24 feet wide at the right-of-way line, which there's a maximum of 20 feet we permit. So they had to go in, pull another permit to make the corrections, as you see pictured on that slide. And that permit was pulled two months ago and is finaled out.
Okay.
And correct.
I don't get too many of these in Kempville, but, I mean, I, I personally have no problem with the three feet of the car parked in the right-of-way, but still on the driveway, that right-of-way is by, never going to be used by the city, so I, I have no problem with that. See no reason not to put us on the consent unless somebody else has a reason.
Okay, fine, there.
Okay.
Okay.
Consent?
Consent.
All right. Next item. Michelle, it's actually four items, 14, 15, 16, and 17. The applicant has requested a deferral of these items, as I understand it, to the October agenda.
So, you see today's?
September. Okay, September agenda. The applicant here will clarify, but this deferral request is based on the posting, proper posting of signage. All right. The next four items are the amendments to the zoning ordinance, which you are familiar with, as you have met twice on these. You'll remember once, following your July 8 hearing, we sat in this room and discussed and went over these proposed changes, and then we had on July 20th at the Convention Center, your meeting for public comment. At that meeting, just so you know, there were approximately 70 citizens showed up, 30 spoke. It seemed like it was relatively even between those in support of short-term rentals and those opposed. These four ordinances were referred to by Councilman Tower. I will briefly go over them here. So the first one is an ordinance to change the penalties for short-term rental violations from criminal to civil penalties. Next slide, Michelle. And what this does is it makes enforcement easier. Think of more of a parking ticket approach. Would allow our inspectors to issue penalties for violations. $200 penalty for the initial summons and a $500 penalty for each additional summons. Currently, they follow the criminal process where we have a notice of violation, issue summons, and then the court goes and assesses those fees. This would streamline the process and make the enforcement effort easier for our inspectors. Agenda number 19 is pertaining to the grandfather status of short-term rentals.
No, hold on one minute.
Yes, Mr. Redmond?
What assurance do we have that we're going to use this in any way to actually enforce things? My concern is, I don't think we do much of enforcement of anything around here. I could take you over to Town Center right now and show you the sign, or somebody's got his number on it for crying out loud, and it's tied with a zip tie to a public stop sign on Independence Boulevard and Columbus Street.
Yes.
And, you know, we don't do any, we don't do a thing about that.
Yes, sir. When we get a complaint, we will.
Like the guy who follows an elephant in the circus. So, I, I don't know that the, I, I'd kind of like some assurance that these things are meaningful and we're not just kind of doing stuff for, to fake around about it.
It is meaningful in the fact that this will be our method of enforcement.
If we intend to enforce.
Yes. We intend on enforcing this ordinance, sir.
There are five code enforcement officials with the City of Virginia Beach, and that is to take, that is to, to administer these rules for short-term rentals, for zoning violations, for somebody with their boat in their driveway, everything, correct?
Not quite true. For boat and driveway and RV, that is the Department of Housing, and they are a more robust enforcement staff.
Okay.
The zoning, the zoning office, we have two inspectors currently in the office working with the registration and conditional use permit process, and we have one field inspector enforcing violations.
Gotcha. So, so basically, the only people that are probably going to have the rules enforced on them are the ones that have actually gone through this process. All the people that, like George mentioned a couple of sessions ago, that are doing it without a conditional use permit, I mean, they're flying beneath the radar. They're probably never going to, you know, go to court. And if they go to court, the code enforcement person's going to have to go to court with them, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's never happening.
Correct, and we have...
You don't have enough support, you don't have enough staff.
We have, at this point, we have issued two court summons, one has gone through the court proceedings. Yep, the person, property owner pled no contest and was issued a $250 fine by the courts. That is where we stand right now. Currently, we are on a complaint basis as far as chasing the violations. You know, when we look long-term, eventually, yes, we would like to be proactive about this. We have 291 registration applications submitted to the department right now. There's 2,600 short-term rentals that will need to eventually submit with us and be registered with us. So it is an uphill battle to get that database and get that review and process, but eventually, as we look down the road, that is where we would like to be.
And, and you have one person?
Currently, we have one inspector dealing with the field enforcement, correct?
Yeah, David?
Yes, sir.
We've known about this since day one, since we started putting this together three, four, or five years ago, whatever, but, I mean, that doesn't mean we still, we still have to come up with an ordinance.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, and we, we've known about it, so you and I have talked about it, so, I mean, we still have to come up with something.
Yeah, right.
And I, you know, I don't want to cast a negative light on this either, because we are working with city management to give us a more robust staff. The securing of host compliance, that company which we can do research for, that is a valuable tool, and that will allow us to go and find these short-term rentals much more efficiently than we have. So there are things in the works. You know, when you take a snapshot right now, it's easy for me to stand up here and seem doom and gloom, but, you know, I can speak for myself and my staff that we think that this can be a successful program, and we're working in that direction. So I want to make sure I'm not all negative.
Robin?
The change to the ordinance will improve your staff's ability to streamline the process?
This would make it easier to, yes, this would make it easier to address those violations, where instead of addressing with a letter and going through that criminal process and taking them through criminal court, we would assess, give them summons with a fine. They could pay the fine, or they could contest the fine and go to court.
Okay. Yeah, Dave?
You, you did a, you, you did an excellent job of answering my question, and I appreciate that, and it was very illuminating, actually. And just, I mean, in answer to yours, the enforcement mechanism is a complaint, because we're never going to have enough people to chase around 2,600 short-term rentals. Never going to happen.
Exactly right.
So, I mean, and I do think, and I do think we ought to have penalties for people. We're talking about people who are scoff laws, who operate without a conditional use permit, right? But for some reason, we, they get rewarded. You say, well, I don't like that. I mean, if people violate the law, they ought to pay consequences for it, so I think that's good. My concern is now, and it always has been, that we don't do enough enforcement, not that we, you know, that we shouldn't have it, I do agree, if, if it helps. So I still don't understand why, when you got a sign on a roadway with 80,000 cars on it like Independence Boulevard is, that nobody can seem to pick that up when they put their phone number on the sign. They have their phone number on the sign, and it's attached to a stop sign.
Can you give...
Or any of it. So I, you, you, I, you did a fine job of answering my question and, and really helped me understand it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
George?
Kevin, I'm just curious, I, I know these are summons, but where, or Bobby, I don't know who would answer, when do you guys decide when it's the tip of the iceberg, when you revoke the CEP?
When it was, there is nothing in the ordinance that gives an established, you know, X amount of violations. When this went through the process and, you know, that three-year discussion with council, three strikes was seen as the time when we bring it back to council, when we say, hey, this is going on, what do you want to do with it?
So it's not written down?
It is not, no.
So should we add that?
So, and here's the hard part, this is where, this is where the difficulty with enforcement is, right? So Kevin and I will tell you that our goal is compliance, right? We don't want to take away something from someone because they may have had one person mess everything up for them, right? And so our goal is compliance. Now, that being said, if they are repeat offenders and we have a history, it makes it easier for us, because essentially, at the end of the day, we'll, in order to have a revocation hearing, we need to bring all the facts to city council, and city council has to agree with us. And so for us to go with one is not helpful, to be honest. To go with three might not be helpful, but, but the repetitive nature of violations is what it is. So I, I will tell you that it took, having done a revocation hearing before elsewhere, it's, there was an instance where there was only one violation that caused it because it was a health safety issue, right? While there, there may have been other ones that were brought up that had multiple issues, and no one had the appetite to take care, to, to do it. And so I think Kevin's point is that we, we need to have a history of it. I would prefer it not to be written so that, so that we can build a case to it, because we would treat it similar to court. We would need to build a case for it, because you're talking about someone's right that they have, have earned or have gotten approval from, and we'll need to put council in a position to be able to deny it appropriately, so.
Well, the reason I, I've been asked, just by residents, where, where is that number? Because it all comes down to management. You got a good management team in there, then you can probably handle it. But if you don't, and you're not responsive, just like your conditions say, then where does that leave us? And the residents are asking, we're saying, hey, be responsive, be responsible, but if they're not doing that, where's that line? And I'm being asked, where's that line? I don't know what to tell them. I need help.
We can't really have a bright line because the violations are so buried. You might have three violations, ones of trash, ones of something small, again, ones because they don't have the sign that Kevin requires posted inside. You know, that may require more than those three. However, you could have one, which is a 200-person party where three people get shot. Then I think we would take that back, even if nothing else was there. So, I mean, it's going to depend, and we need some flexibility when we do enforcement.
Okay.
Now, not saying that's not part of the discussion, right? So I believe that there, there, I believe that's one thing we probably should put up there, and maybe, it may not be a revocation, but it may be that we, we carry them in front of council to explain themselves, and council can decide whether they can continue to operate or not, right? I mean, we could have a bright line where it says you need to show up and talk to them and explain what's going on, but not necessarily have a, bring them forward saying that we're going to revoke you. So it's similar to the administrative review that's already in the process now, where after five years, we could bring them back into council. But this is part of the discussion, Mr. Alvarez. I believe that it's not something that, to push to the side. I believe it is a potential to, to have something, but again, we need the flexibility to handle the life safety issues, so.
Thank you.
Oh, we're going to, we're going, I'm thinking that we're going to, since people are going to be here talking, we're going to hear, make 18, 19, 20, 21 be heard, and then vote on them separately after that?
Yes, our, our hope was to have a, have the discussion on each item in a block, and then if you wanted to vote on them separately...
Yeah, that's, okay, perfect, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any more comments? All right, Kevin?
Okay, I'll briefly run through the other three. Agenda item 19 deals with the revocation of the grandfathered status of short-term rentals. Next slide, Michelle. And also with the required findings. With the grandfathered status, it allows, says that the, any grandfathered short-term rental, that status may be revoked by the planning director if it is inactive for two years. This coincides with how our ordinance currently addresses non-conforming uses. As it states now, that grandfather status runs with the land, and it runs indefinitely. This would give it a two, two-year window of inactivity before that grandfather status is done, and they would need to return to council to operate as a short-term rental again. The other aspect of this amendment is the required findings. What the required findings really do is provide a basis for which staff, planning commission, and city council can evaluate and give criteria as to whether they ultimately approve or deny an application. There's four areas that are addressed. One is that the density of short-term rentals in the immediate vicinity do not change the characteristic of the surrounding neighborhood. The second is in regards to parking. Parking is readily available, and on-site parking is appealing environmentally responsible. This is, you know, kind of touching on what we're seeing, is we don't necessarily want people paving their entire front yards to meet the parking needs. It's a, a consequence that we're seeing that might not have been thought out when this thing was adopted, and that any off-site parking is reasonable and would be used by applicants. We don't want solutions, you know, that won't, won't be used. The third is that the increased occupancy, and that's the number of people staying in the home, is compatible with the residential neighborhood to, you know, mitigate the possible negative impacts such as noise, trash, and things that I know George has discussed from a property near his. And the last is just a recognition that short-term rentals are a valuable resource in this city. They complement our tourist industry and are particularly needed in close proximity to districts and areas that draw a large amount of visitors. to districts and areas that draw a large amount of visitors. Questions?
Question? Dave? Oh, sorry, Robin?
Ladies first.
Would this allow staff and the commissioners the opportunity to say a neighborhood is now too dense of short-term rentals and deny it on that fact?
It would have to be an individual determination, you can't make a joint. Okay, we're not going to approve any of them in this area, but if each one that came up, you could make a determination, and it's changing the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
By what objective measure? I don't know what that means. In the immediate, do not change the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. There are people, there's a fellow named Larry Horvath who comes down here, he's a nice guy. He thinks one STR in his neighborhood changes the character of the neighborhood. And I don't agree with that. I mean, I don't know what it is. What is the standard by which we judge that, that is objective and not just based on whatever somebody throws out? And I don't know how to do that, and we're going to get this a little later on these other ordinances, which I'm not going to support. But I would like someone to be able to articulate it in a way that has some real meaning to it, and is not just a bunch of fake words. Because from the beginning of this debate, we came up with all kinds of stuff, it seems to be, that was A, never enforceable, and B, didn't have a whole lot of real meaning to it, which is why we're still in this mess. So, and we'll be back in this mess if that's the case. So, can someone tell me, Kay, I hate it, it may land on you, it may land on Kevin, I know you guys didn't write this stuff, but can somebody tell me, what is the objective measure by which we conclude that something is changing the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood? Objective measure?
Okay, sometimes you can't have an objective measure. When you decide to give somebody a conditional use permit, it's subjective. It's not objective. Objective requires numbers, and it requires not having any individuality and thought into what is density. Density in one neighborhood, the density of three in this blocks, say a mile block, is too much for some people. Some people may say, "No, I could have 30 in that area," and it still wouldn't change. It's never going to change the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. It's an individual thought. We're going to put together all your individual wisdom, subjectively, and make that decision. There are lots of things that have no objectivity, and this happens to be one of them. Zoning has very little that's objective.
Except for parking spaces.
Excellent explanation.
Well, but, okay, so STRs are a needed resource, I don't agree with that, but STRs are a needed resource in certain areas of the city, particularly those in close proximity to venues, districts, and areas that generate high volume of visitors. Would that not include Old Beach? Would that not include Croatan? Would that not include?
Would that would include?
All of the ocean, I mean, you know, pretty much anything east of First Colonial Road?
Well, it would include anything west of Great Neck, Shore Drive. I mean, anything that's water.
But you're making my point precisely, which is, we have changes to the ordinance now that have no meaning, no fundamental meaning. Larry thinks one changes the character of the neighborhood. I gather that some of you guys think the next one would change the character of the neighborhood.
Unfortunately, Larry's not up here.
Huh? Larry's a good guy, not blaming Larry, I'm just using him as an example. He's a good guy, I mean, I consider him a friend. But in any event, we just don't share the same view. But I don't know how you actually do this stuff with this made-up language, not least of which, that all of this stuff has come to us too fast, with nowhere near enough consideration, and suddenly we're voting on them. So, I'm uncomfortable with that. But number one and number four seems to me contradict one another. Maybe I'm weird, but they seem to me to contradict one another. Number four says to me that everything in Old Beach is fair game, and everything in Croatan's fair, everything in the north end of the oceanfront's fair game. They are in close proximity to venues, districts, and areas that generate a high volume of visitors, period.
You could say that as far as what surrounds Town Center.
No doubt. That's my point. Thank you. Appreciate the confirmation. That is my point. It doesn't have a lot of meaning to me. So, and I'm just, I'm not going to support stuff that, to me, is kind of made up with not a whole lot of meaning. That's my concern. I don't think this stuff's been anywhere near thought through enough, in my opinion.
George?
Yeah, I just want to give you some examples of what I'm seeing. And with number two, visually appealing parking. So, the other day, about two weeks ago, I was driving, I was coming down 16th Street around Baltic, and I seen three cars stacked side by side, so it must have been a duplex. And the car in the middle was trying to get out. He was jockeying in and out, in and out. Took him about five times, and you know what he did? He went through the neighbor's yard. So, parking's a big concern of mine, that's why I always bring it up. It's got to work, it's got to, I'm always trying to stick with the ordinances, but it might look good on paper, but when you're a neighbor and you're seeing it, it's not good. So, I just wanted to let you guys know what I'm seeing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Whitney?
It seems like we need to take a map and mark where we feel short-term rentals are appropriate and where they're not. I agree with Mr. Redmond. I just, it just seems like this hasn't really been well-thought-out, and we're just trying to jam it through, because that's what we're supposed to do, because a councilman wants it, so.
Well, Whitney, and we have maps. We've got, I mean, we've got them, and planning did do a great job with that.
But what I'm saying is, I think, I think...
And so, on that, and I think the reason why, and as much as I, talking about Old Beach. Old Beach is a neighborhood. It has an overlay on it, not just for design, but if you notice when you drive through Old Beach, it has stub streets in it. The stub streets were created to block the tourists and the resort from coming into the neighborhood, because it was impacting the children and the families so much that that's why those streets were created. Stop parking, stop the traffic, to help contain the neighborhood and protect it, and keep the character of what it was for. So, what has happened, obviously, is that the encroachment or the spider webs of STRs that have been created in this small area that everybody, and I don't live there, so, but I'm just, because I drive through it, I see it all the time, has changed everybody's viewpoint, and, well, it's proximity to Arctic, it's close to Pacific, it's close to the Taco Bell. Yeah, it's always been close to these places, but these places have grown up around it and now are changing the complexity and the character of a neighborhood that has been there for a very long time, since the start of the resort area. As a matter of fact, Tog Tog's was somebody's home. The house next to McDonald's on 22nd Street or 20th Street was somebody's home, and then it turned into the Christmas attic. So, all of this area was, in fact, a neighborhood. The resort has now, because it has, has sort of changed the complexion of this neighborhood, and so, the ordinance in front of us, from what I understand, and from the many people that I've spoken to, although not perfect, and I agree with that, it's to help slow the progress of what's happening to this particular area. So, yeah.
Well, you know, things change. And they would change, they were changing before the STRs, you know, became the latest thing, and they'll continue to change. I have a 250-year-old tree in my front yard. It was a sapling, Lynn Haven River now tells me about the time of the Revolutionary War. Well, guess what? It wasn't a housing project, I mean, neighborhood then. We have 1,000 homes in our neighborhood now, it's a big neighborhood. It was forest. Things change. They're going to change in the Old Beach, they're going to change, and they're going to change, and they're going to change. And saying something isn't perfect, and this is far from perfect, in my view. One and four are completely contradictory, in my view. One doesn't really mean much. Four seems to make a lot more sense to me, because it's easier to define. I tell you, some of these areas are in close proximity, and you're right, Town Center is too. I would argue that there's some stuff around here is the same thing. You've got this high concentration of people who are coming to this venue at the municipal center. So, that seems to me that that would mean, this is just not, in my view, been thought through enough. And to say, it seems to me, as he says, just jamming this through to figure out some way to erect another barrier, but it's bad law, in my view.
Yeah.
It requires much more thought, in my view.
This is based around Old Beach, right?
This particular amendment addresses the ordinance as a whole.
As a whole, okay, okay.
The one, the next slide I will get to is the one specific to Old Beach. But this is all short-term rentals.
Okay, this is good.
Sorry, I was ahead of one. Yes, Robin?
Could we vote on, are we permitted to vote on half of the ordinance? Do we have to vote on the ordinance as a whole?
We're going to vote individually, as each...
No, I'm sorry, I mean, like, this particular ordinance, like, there's a first part and a second part.
I don't know the answer to that.
We could amend it and take number four out.
I mean, you can, so, the planning commission, you can make a recommendation amending this amendment if you want. You can choose to not recommend it going forward.
Well, what you could do is strike the required findings and approve the ordinance with just the grandfathered, or vice versa.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
Yeah, Mike?
Well, I don't understand number three, I'm going to tell you that. Number three under number two.
Increased...
Increased occupancy is compatible with a neighborhood to mitigate impacts of noise. Like, increased occupancy would exacerbate noise and trash and other negatives. I don't get it.
This is the things they have to find to make it okay to approve it, that the density do not change the characteristics, that parking is readily available, that the increased occupancy is compatible, and that they are a needed resource. So, you have to find that to approve them. That's how it's written. You can go the opposite way for a denial. See, it has to be written one way or the other, so.
Okay, so, in other words, if you said this is, the increased occupancy of this STR is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, then?
Then you shouldn't...
That makes more sense.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
I would be having to make a motion to strike number two and ordinance number 19 moving forward, if everybody's capable, good with that, because I don't like that required findings at all.
Which one do you not want?
Item two.
Required findings, I agree with you.
Yeah, strike item two.
The grandfather part, I understand. The rest of it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
I would make a motion for that, if needed.
I don't know that I agree with that, though.
That's right, you can just go by here.
Okay.
We'll get there.
It's a good discussion.
Thank you. For that thumbs up.
For three years.
All right, and I will use what Commissioner Oliver did as a segue into item 20, which is specific to the Old Beach overlay. Next slide, please. And this would allow short-term rentals by right in the Old Beach overlay, provided two conditions are met. The first is that all the requirements of section 241.2 are met, and the second is that the short-term rental is the principal residence and owned by the operator. So, what that means, and our ordinance actually does define this, is that the person has to reside in that residence 183 days or more of the year, and this would only allow for one short-term rental per property owner. This is actually, as far as the principal residence requirement goes, this is actually a direction that several municipalities have recently done, Richmond being one of the most recent. You know, and following through with how their enforcement works on this, they do require a driver's license and a tax bill as proof that it is their principal residence. Just to give you an idea of, you know, that seems like, of how we could, would verify and check that. And this, as I said, is specific to the Old Beach overlay district. Are there any questions regarding this?
Yeah, I'm sorry to take up some of my time. So, if I buy a house, I own a house. I buy another house, because it's on the market and it's a good price, okay? And my daughter and her friends live in that house. I can't rent, I can't have a short-term rental in that other one.
No, it's not...
Not the way this is written.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It's not a primary.
Okay, gotcha.
And you just jogged my memory on one other aspect of it, and my memory just jogged back, and I forgot it. Daughter rental, short-term, I'll remember it.
People sometimes own more than one house. There are people on this body who own more than one house.
Correct.
And sometimes they're for decent reasons, like, we have people who've had, come up here and talked to us and said, "Well, my daughter's living in the place," you know, and that kind of thing. It seems to me a little bit mean, but in any event.
Right. And the way it is written, yes, it would have to be your principal residence, and I did remember the other thing. Also, the way this ordinance is written, if you do not meet these requirements, you cannot even apply for a deviation to council. You can't bring an application forward for approval from council. So, it's either you meet these requirements and you can have a short-term rental, or it is prohibited.
Yes, Robin?
Thanks.
This is what they do in New Orleans, and they've had a lot of success. And I think this was what we talked about the last meeting. We had the sailor who was going to be deployed for a couple of months and wanted to be able to rent out his home, and I think this is an excellent use of short-term rental, because it is actually a short term, and there's more incentive for the property owner to take care of the property.
Whitney?
If this is adopted, you won't have any more, you know, investors or developers buying, you know, rundown house that they got for that good price and putting money into it and creating a short-term rental. And you also are not going to have a developer that buys a house, tears it down, and builds a new house. And, I mean, I have seen, and I guess since we talked about this a couple of sessions ago, I do feel like short-term rentals belong in some places, and some places they don't belong. I will say that near the oceanfront, you know, and maybe it's, you know, east of Baltic, you know, I don't know exactly where that line is, but I think it belongs. And I think that you go down there, and you drive around, and you see a lot of the new houses that were built. Those were built by people that have sold them to somebody that's doing short-term rentals, or they were built so that the person could do the short-term rental. And this is a redevelopment tool for that area, and there really was not that much redevelopment happening down there in those neighborhoods before short-term rentals. I am not in residential, and I always wondered, what is going on down there? And I talked to somebody who sold four houses in a row, and I said, "You know, three of those houses have come here for short-term rentals, conditional use permits." And he said to me, "I sold them too cheap. I should have sold them for more money." I mean, it is, people are buying these places to do short-term rentals. I get it, it's a business going into a residential area, but it is redeveloping that area. And before, you know, I don't think really there was that much redevelopment in areas like that. I mean, it was happening in Shadalong, it was happening in certain parts of that area. I don't think it was happening in Old Beach, but I could be wrong.
Well, I will say, on that note, we were doing, they were, the builders were buying up the old houses, and they were building new houses, and because we had the guidelines for all that and the redevelopment, and they were selling the houses, it just recently, as far as what I have witnessed, is that now they are buying them and redeveloping them and selling them for short-term rentals. The issue is now, is that we're running out of affordable housing in those areas that the guidelines and the desired guidelines, and planning staff can definitely speak on this a lot more, Jonathan, Form-Based Code, all of those things that were put into place for this overlay along with protecting the neighborhood, and I'm not, I'm just, was to push the houses, put the parking in the back, make it cottage-style, make these homes more appealing, so that the people that went in to buy the homes, to live in the houses, were doing that. Short-term rental just sort of... just sort of came into the mix and became, I probably more, I don't do the math, but probably more profitable than just selling a house or renting a house on an annual basis or six months or a monthly basis. But they were, they were, they were, and I know Jonathan can definitely speak to that, they were, they were flipping them and redoing them and selling them. Now, the issue is, is how many houses are available for the younger generations that are affordable to buy.
So, an affordable housing argument.
Well, affordable, I'm sorry, Mike.
Thank you. Well, I agree a lot with what Whitney was saying, and Old Beach is really two different, there are two different section of, sections of Old Beach. And there's a, the area, I think that's, you could say either east of Baltic, or maybe you could say east of Arctic, but probably, and I've ridden my bike around down there a lot since this came up, just looking at, you know, what kinds of housing and the neighborhood feel or not. And certainly, it needs to be protected west of Baltic. And I think that this ordinance, if it applied to that, would be, would be easy to pass. The other is that there has been, that other area has sort of been, is closer to the oceanfront, has been sort of commercialized. There's a lot of rental property in there, whether it's short-term rental or not short-term rental. What the builders have done has definitely improved the appearance and the quality and the value of homes in, in Old Beach. It's really coming along very well. You know, the fact that, you know, that's, that the short-term rental has been an incentive for that, you know, it's a real balancing thing. You know, we want an attractive area. We want to have attractive dwellings and buildings. So, you know, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable putting that requirement of principal residence on all of Old Beach.
I, I, I'm, I'll jump in.
Go ahead, Whitney.
I completely agree with, with Mike. I think that, that making it where it has to be a principal residence, to me, you know, in a section of this, makes more sense. Getting back to this, what I said, and you just mentioned, it has been a redevelopment tool. So, I too have driven around this area, and I feel like as you get closer to Pacific Avenue, it makes sense. And, and maybe it needs to be, just, you just draw that line right down Baltic and east of Balt, yeah, east of Baltic, it's, you can do short-term rentals, whether you, whether it's your principal residence or not. West of Baltic, it has to be your principal residence. And I think also, if you have people that are buying older properties, renovating them or tearing them down and building a new house, east of Baltic, I mean, it's going to raise the bar for the neighborhood. I mean, I think that you're going to see more, more redevelopment will probably occur west of Baltic, if it's happening east of Baltic.
I noticed the zoning is A-12 predominantly.
Pretty telling.
Dee.
Yeah.
Yeah, George.
So I, I received a lot of calls again from this, especially on this note, or this ordinance. But just like Mr. Whitney said, I mean, I didn't realize that you got Pacific Avenue with RT3, then you got your A-12, and you start getting your mixture at Baltic, and then you get your residences. So I like what he's saying. I think we need to hear. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of people here.
We're going to have to hear it.
But I agree with what you're saying on maybe doing a boundary. I'm not comfortable with this overlay. I don't know if we don't approve it, where's that go, city council? But I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it.
Indeed.
Yeah.
Listening to y'all is a great example of why we're moving too fast. We need to slow down. We, we've done this before. We moved too fast before, and that's, like Dave says, is where we are now. This is why we're here right now. How we go about doing it, I, I don't know, but we have a couple other council people that are bringing something else forward. I think what needs to be, this needs to wait on this until we hear from all council. I know, I know we can't wait on this, it has to go forward, or we don't, you know. But if it has to go forward, then we need to redefine it today, redefine it today, if we're going to go forward.
All right, so.
We can do that.
We can do that.
So, I guess my, my question, and I totally, you know, I think that they definitely raised the bar, and you look at 21st Street, 22nd Street, those aren't neighborhood streets by any stretch of the imagination. And, and I, and I think that anything that's on our management kind of thing, as I said, you know, we've done short-term rentals in Virginia Beach for, since the beginning of time.
Hundred years.
Right. Most of those were always managed. What happened was the, the entity of an Airbnb that came in that changed the complexion of what a weekly or a bi-weekly rental behaved. And that's where, that's why, basically is why we're sitting here. I don't, I don't have a problem at all changing the, the overlay as, as far as where it's more commercial or anything like that. I do, I do, I don't want to not put something through, because the problem that we're seeing was the numbers that Mr. Kemp spit out was 2,600 we already have. We already have 100 and some in the pipeline. And I think that the goal here was to somehow slow the process down enough to give us time to come back in and work on it. And so modifying it or amending it to enough that we can all agree on something to slow it down, I think is maybe, is more beneficial to where we are than, than, than just saying we don't, we don't want to have anything to do with it.
And we, it would go up to council as the planning commission's version. You all did that with the original STR.
And they blew it off.
No, they don't.
But it will go up as the planning commission version, and you can make any changes you like.
Right, yeah.
I'm, I understand what you're saying, Dave, but I'm uncomfortable with putting a little more consideration to this stuff. Let's just start writing lines on maps and throwing this out and doing all that. My concern is, this is all, I mean, for the time we had the last ordinance passed, people were trying to change it. One of the comments that we got out of that, very telling, half the crowd was in support, half the crowd was in opposition. So let's not act like this is any kind of, you know, monolithic view. But, you know, this idea that we just kind of sit down and go, let's just, it's not there, and it's not there, and we'll take this, I mean, I'm uncomfortable doing that. It just sounds slapdash to me. Unless I get convinced of something else, I'm not going to support this ordinance. So everyone else can freedom, be free to make their own judgment. City council says, send it back. All right, we'll send it back with whatever we come up with. I, I don't think we've put enough into this for me to be comfortable supporting it. And if what we end up with is, what goes out of here is, I can live with that. And they're going to make their own decision based on what's in their own heads anyway. So, I, I just, but I think we get sometimes, just, we kind of get slapdashed too quick about stuff. And as I said, I don't want to be making bad laws. So, I, I mean, what you say, it was a very good comment that you made about, that you look at the color on that map, it's pretty, I kind of like to talk about it, though, in more than like an hour. And so, anyway, I'm not, unless I get convinced of something else, I'm not going to support it. I do have, like George, I have a big problem with this idea of the principal residence, too. So there's no such thing anymore as an investor. That seems kind of dumb. Put a sign on the building that says, Virginia Beach, not open for business.
Well, I, yeah.
I, I agree with you 100%. I'm not going to support it either, if it's like, we have to go up like this. But if we can, I mean, and if we slash it in half, no matter what it does, it's going forward.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, I mean, I would like to at least make them think about, or let us think about something, and may A-12 be by conditional use permit, and everything else, state 36, whatever, be by principal residence. I have no problem with that, but I just, I'd rather do something than just vote no and send it forward. That's my opinion.
And, can I speak?
Yeah, Whitney.
I agree with Ms. Oliver, as well as, I mean, I guess, little bits and pieces, or big bits, bits and pieces of what everybody has said. It's, it's a small area.
Very small.
Fortunately, it's a small area. I totally agree. I hate to just, you know, do something without giving it more, more thought and consideration. I personally have given it a lot of thought and consideration. I feel like if we took that line, just drew it straight down Baltic, and east of it, it doesn't have to be your personal residence. West of it, it does. If we have to send something through, maybe that's, maybe it sends a message to council to think this through differently. If not, I mean, I, I, I mean, I think that it either has to be deferred, or we have to, you know, I think you're going to pass.
On this thing. That's what I'm going to, are we making motions on individual ordinances?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'm ready to make a motion on this one.
We're only an informal.
You're not, or you are?
I am.
But Whitney, real quick, you can't really do Baltic Avenue, I think, because on 23rd Street is west of Baltic, so you've got to look at A-12 in the purple.
You want.
You know what I mean? So we've got to kind of look at what's, what's zone A-12, because that, that on 22nd Street, rather, is, I know it's Old Beach, but that might be already short-term rentals there. I'm not sure.
Just do the whole corridor.
I think those are short-term rentals.
I think they're already short-term rentals.
They're, they're, as a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, they are.
I'd have to look at area. I'm pretty sure those are all new houses.
But they're all, don't forget now, that would be part of your west of Baltic.
You, you bring up a very good point.
You'd have to do the corridor.
And that goes back to what Dave said. You know, this is, it's, it's may not be a straight line.
You'd have to make it a T.
Huh?
You'd have to make it a T.
Or A-12.
So that the 21st and 22nd Street were included in, in your Baltic line.
Yeah.
But, all that being said, yes, sir, Mr. Kemp.
Just as a formality here, this map is a little dated in that, that purple strip down 22nd Street.
Come on.
Oh, sorry. That purple strip got rezoned to Oceanfront Resort when we did that mass rezoning.
That it did, didn't it?
It did. So.
Can you point to what you're talking about?
22nd Street.
Well, I can.
Yeah, I know, it's hard to see.
Yeah, I'm making another old.
22nd Street is, of that.
That's all.
Is that 22nd Street?
Yeah, it's 22nd.
Yeah, right along 22nd Street, that main artery out, from the oceanfront, got rezoned into OR. The rest of the map remained in the Old Beach.
Anything else OR that not shown correctly?
No. No, that was it, just along that major arter, artery.
That takes care of that.
Well, all of the, the rest of it's all RT3.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Okay, the whole corridor.
Can, Kevin, can you get an updated map by, by our hearing?
Yes, we'll get, we'll get an updated map on the screen.
Okay. I'd like to have one in front of us, because it's going to be hard to do.
I think I have copies. We can make copies of it.
Thank you.
So, hey, it's, it's not, and obviously, this has turned into more of a workshop than it has, but it is our impromptu. So, it's just a question. Because this, we all know it's going to go up, it's going to come back. It's going to kind of go around and around a little bit before we ever get there, and then Councilman Woods and Councilman Jones is going to impart whatever they want to with it as well. There's no way to just stop the applications or put everything on hold until we can possibly figure this out.
No, you cannot do a moratorium. There's no statutory authority to do a moratorium on STRs. If you look at the next ordinance, however, which is on transition rules.
Michelle, you mind going to the next slide?
You say moratorium under Virginia law?
Yeah.
And one more. One more, Michelle. Yes, item, agenda item 21 is a transition rules for these new ordinances, and what it says is that the proposed ordinance will be effective immediately upon approval. So any applications in the queue or that have been submitted, they would have to meet the regulations of the new ordinance if they had not been approved by city council. There's no vested rights argument as far as they submitted under certain rules. They would be impacted by the new ordinance.
And actually, if you have already got an application in and you submitted it before city council referred these ordinances on the Old Beach overlay to you all, then they will be under the old rules. And with us having to go back and do them, that may have some bearing eventually, if council passes these. But anything after that, okay, anything after that time, you will go with the rules that are in effect when it goes to city council. So if they adopt it six weeks from now, anything that gets in before six weeks from now would go under the old rules. Anything after six weeks from now would go under the, the new rules. And that is the law, that the proposed ordinance was, will be effective immediately upon approval of city council. We sometimes have transition rules that allow people to, if they were in the queue, to go on. This is not one of those ordinances.
Okay. That answers that.
And that wraps up the four agenda items with those proposed ordinances. I've enjoyed the conversation.
That concludes the slideshow.
No, it was a great conversation.
It was almost six weeks ago.
Really sincerely.
You're going to be here later, right?
Yes.
Yeah, good, good, good.
He's leaving.
I will offer just one piece as you continue the discussion on the Old Beach portion of it. The, keep in mind, the status quo right now is conditional use permit, okay? So there may be one, instead of trying to, again, we, as Mr. Redden said, further discussion is probably necessary. You can go, as Mr. Weiner said, to use the A-12 as your dividing line, or you could just say, keep conditional use permit and say, the ones that are permitted by right are the ones that are, that are owner occupied. And then, then you can still at least have a balance when you're reviewing them to say, well, what makes you different than having to operate by right? So that's another option as well. I don't want to toss all those things out there. But as you start to think about it, because we do have, the current status quo is conditional use permit, it could be that you keep the status quo and add this other requirement. So I'm just putting that out there as you start, start to think, think through it. If you feel like you need additional time to go through it, instead of changing the status quo, which, which you would do, you would have that allotment for them to still apply, but have an out if you own it, so.
I'm going to throw this out there, and I know everybody's probably going to throw things at me. They don't really have to hear this till September 19th or whatever it is, right? They're going to, they have that, that's our 100 day that they're.
September 15.
So it would be after our next September meeting.
That is technically correct, yes.
Technically correct. So if we deferred this one.
Yes, that is correct.
If we deferred this particular one, that number 20, to put some type of, some, in place, to put a, to split that up, could we have, could we do that and maybe have some type of workshop to try and figure out where that line is? Or just do it today?
Oh, there is, so I will say it.
Let's do it today. All right, we're going today. We're done with it. Do it today.
Because it's going to.
Can we leave the map up? Are we able to leave the Old Beach map up?
We're going to go.
Yeah, we will have an updated map, and we'll leave it up when your discussion.
Okay.
You know, during that discussion.
What do you mean during our break?
During our break, just while we're eating.
You see the exact same thing we did in the workshop.
Yeah, Marshall.
We don't need to keep doing that.
We're going to be together for next four weeks, anyway.
I guess we're going to eat another room anyway, never mind.
Okay.
Are we leaving it up?
Do we have anything else?
There is some, there is one other additional comment that needs to be made. Karen Pacilla with Housing wanted to go back to the Franklin Johnson project. There was a, she wanted to provide a comment.
Just clarification.
Yes, a clarification.
Just a little bit of clarification. Good morning, planning commissioners. It's still morning. I just wanted to bring up on application number five, Franklin Johnson, the Birchwood. We did have a meeting where the applicant representative presented the proposal, and a question was posed, actually, two questions. One about affordability and a percentage of the affordability of the units on that application. The applicant's representative said that they would most likely have a component of rent restriction, and they feel that they would be affordable. Now, we did not get a confirmation or true Now, we did not get a confirmation or true clarification on that, and we have not heard from the planning department that they received anything as well. So we would just like to have confirmation at the hearing that they are looking at doing affordable housing and what percentage that they would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all we have at this moment.
Okay.
So, we do have an additional speaker, we have a speaker sign up for item number, Bill's item number six, I think. Is that right, Bill?
That's right.
The Bonnie Bright Sand Company, so we'll need to hear that item.
Do we have a lot for 18, 19, 20?
Currently, right.
Now we have 16.
We have 16 speakers.
So far. How many, 16?
Yes.
For the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle, can we get through this real quick? But we're, yeah, before we do this. Consent, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. To be heard, 6, 8, 12, 18, 19, 20, 21. Consent on STRs are 9, 10, 11, and 13. I know I'm messing you up by going all over the place. Deferral for indefinite deferrals, item 7. And 30-day deferral, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, 40.
Sorry.
Are we going to confirm that the senior housing is affordable?
Yeah.
Before we, okay.
I need somebody to do the prayer. Don't, don't all raise hands.
I'll do it if you've got the, if you've got the cheat sheet.
Okay, and the pledge? Great, thank you. And introduction of the commissioners. Whitney, I'm going to let you do that because you're all the way down at the end, and you might as well just circle around.
They got a cheat sheet with their, everybody's actual occupation?
You got our names right here.
Yeah, you got our names.
I knew the names.
You don't know us yet, come on.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, no, we'll get you.
If not, I'm going to make up occupations.
That's fine.
And I don't think, I don't think we want, I don't think we want me doing that.
Might be better than what we got tonight.
Is that everything, Mr. DeHaan?
That's everything we have for now.
Okay, great. The informal session is now closed.